Okie dokie. Let's go and get started, our third session. And thank you, everybody, for being here. We have heard from a lot of folks. We want to hear from each one of you. And thank you for what you do for the community. We will call, in order, the next four will be Habitat for Humanity, All Souls Counseling, Children First, and the Support Center. So let's hear from, if you could give us your name, and let's see. Habitat has two applications. You'll have five minutes. Folks with one application will have three minutes.
Thank you. Thank you for this long afternoon. You have the pleasure of hearing from so many great organizations doing so much work, and such a hard decision to figure out how to get us all the funding that we need. So thank you for the work you're doing. I'm Laura Collins, the Grants Coordinator with Asheville Area Habitat. And I'd like to introduce Hugh Lippam, who's right behind me, who is our Home Repair Manager, and Jill Franklin, who is our Family Selection Coordinator. And I wanted you to see more of our staff. I think you see Lou fairly often, but these are two newer members of our staff, very highly qualified, and I wanted you to be able to have a chance to ask them questions, if you'd like to. So we're here to remind you about the two grants that you have in front of us. One for our Family Services Program, which you have generously funded in the past, and one for our Home Repair Program. This was funded in the past one year by the Affordable Housing Program, but it did not receive funding for fiscal year 15 or 16 from that program. So our Family Services Program includes our extensive homeowner education and one-on-one personalized service with every family that we serve. Jill touches every application sent our way for both homeownership and home repairs, and that adds up to hundreds annually. For potential new homeowners, she holds monthly information sessions to explain the whole process, from application to closing on the homes. And since we started holding these events in October, we've had 138 attendees, which speaks to the affordable housing crisis that I know you all know we have here in Buncombe County. We're currently building in the Irwin School District off Johnston Boulevard, and counting the families that have already moved in there, or that have been approved for that subdivision, and the families that are in the pipeline likely to be approved for that subdivision. Those 25 houses will be home to 39 children, 14 of whom are under the age of five. Now, you probably know, from your past support of us, that each of our homeowners go through 50 or more hours of intensive education before closing on their homes. But let me remind you that we also act as the bank for each of these families. We do all of the underwriting. We've got a licensed loan mortgage originator here with me, as well as a certified housing counselor, Jill is. We do all the underwriting, we hold the mortgages, and the home repair loans, and we stick with these families for as long as they're in these homes, which is usually a very long time. We now have more than 20 of our families who live in homes that they have been able to pay off. That's the kind of security that all of our families in Buncombe County would like. Because we provide these 0% interest mortgages and sell the houses with no down payment, we're able to offer the opportunity of that kind of lifetime security that our families would otherwise not know. So far, in this fiscal year, for home repair, Jill has 42 applications that have been approved and passed on to our Construction Services Department, which makes a nice segue to our second application, which is for our Home Repair Program. The recently released Bowen Housing Analysis makes clear that affordable housing is really at a crisis level here. And we've known that, and we see no end in sight. I think all of you are familiar by now with the findings of that report, but let me highlight one of the study's five recommendations. The need for home repair and maintenance programs, with an emphasis on senior housing. The analysis concludes the aging population's housing need may be mitigated if seniors are able to stay in their homes longer and age in place. The large majority of our home repairs have been for elderly and/or disabled homeowners since we began the program in 2011. We already have a strong track record of meeting this recommended action head-on. We've expanded the Home Repair Program each year since its inception, and with Hugh on board, we're positioned to continue expanding this critical work. Of the 40 repairs we expect to finish before the end of this fiscal year, 1/3 are in the county outside of the city limits. Previously, this number stood even higher, around 40% are repairs being in the county outside the city. But unfortunately, since we've had no dedicated sources of funding for repairs in the county for over a year, and currently, our entire dedicated revenue for the Home Repair Program is designated for the City of Asheville, or even specific neighborhoods within the City of Asheville, we have not been able to do marketing and outreach to the county. Now, this hasn't stopped us from responding to the need we see in the county. We are still doing county home repairs, but it has affected where we're looking, because we're now currently focused on finding home repairs in those areas where we have funding. So we want to be able to continue to expand into the county. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions for Laura, Hugh, or Jill? Thank you. Next, we're going to hear from All Souls Counseling, then Children's First, then the Support Center, and then the YWCA.
Hi. My name is Sue Brooks, and I'm Executive Director at All Souls Counseling Center, and have been for the 15 years of our existence, which we are celebrating this year. I'd like three points to be able to share with you, and we are very grateful for this opportunity to speak to our funding request. First point, who we are, how we're different. Second point, why we were asking for this funding. And third point, the so what? Or what makes a difference? Why is what we do important? We are different in that when we were established as a safety net counseling center for Buncombe County, Asheville, 15 years ago, it was to be able to provide services to people who were uninsured and underinsured in our community. People who were falling through the cracks and not getting the much-needed services that other people with money and insurance were able to secure. We have worked on a volunteer model ever since our inception, and because of that, over the last couple of years, our therapists have provided over $600,000 of in-kind services into our community, and our patient medication assistance has provided over $500,000 over the past two years. Because of that, our investment capabilities are nine to one on our return. What makes us different is that volunteer model, and it is the way that our over 20 therapists and our psychiatrists give back to this community. Our request is based on being able to work at more of our capacity. Right now, because of our financial or funding limitations, we are only able to serve about 50 to 60 of our capacity. What makes us different? The so what factor, which I want to leave you with, because I think that's the most important piece. Mental health counseling is important because it keeps our community, our individuals, families, couples, functioning. Why is that important? Because as an individual, as a parent, as partner, as someone who is employed in our community, in our country, if people are not able to function, our systems break down and fall apart. So for people without insurance, people that are underinsured still, they deserve to have the same ability to get help, to be given assistance with tasks, skills, self-improvement, especially those with trauma. And we thank you for this opportunity in being able to help keep our community partners functioning. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Brooks? Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Children First Support Center and YW. Allison, come on up.
Good afternoon, Chairman Gant, Commissioners. My name is Allison Jordan, and I'm Executive Director of Children First Communities and Schools. And we are the local affiliate of the National Communities and Schools Program. Thank you for your previous support and the opportunity to present today about our Communities and Schools Success Coordinators. We are requesting funding to expand and to support two more schools. I wanted to take our time today to share with you what doesn't come through as easily in our application, and that is hearing the difference that the Communities and Schools Success Coordinator actually makes to a child. And I have brought with me today Badala. And Badala has been served by our Success Coordinator, both at Johnston Elementary and our Learning Center at Deverview.
Hello. My name is Badala. I'm 10 years old, and I'm in the fifth grade at the Joe P. Edwin Intermediate. Before Edwin, I went to Johnston Elementary School. When I was at Johnston, the Success Coordinator helped me with my reading, my math, and helped me get my glasses. I have been at the Children First Community and School, Deverview Learning Center for five years. I live at Deverview with my family, so when I get off the bus, I walk to the Learning Center. Every day after homework, we do fun things like dancing with Lisa Zahia and soccer with Coach Josh at ABYSA. I love going to the homework club because they help me with my homework and teaches new things each day. At the Learning Center, everybody feels safe because of the Success Coordinator and the AmeriCorps members.
Badala is just one of 848 students that are served annually through our Success Coordinator Program in Emma and Johnston Elementary. This is a number that could expand to over 2,500 if we had funding to support two more schools. Communities and Schools is a national model with both resources and research to support its success in Buncombe County. By investing in Children First Communities and Schools, your currently, your current investment helps over 3,000 students, which is about 7% of our children's population. And these are children just like Badala and many others. You are also investing in local staff, local leadership, that know the community but are backed by national research. Badala has a bright future. In fact, I brought her here because you may see her here in 20 years. She may be right here, or right there. But what I know is that Badala has a bright future, and with your support, she and many other children will have the opportunity to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Allison? For Badala? Thank you so much for coming. All right. Next up, we have Support Center, and then we hear from the YW, and then Mountain Housing Opportunities.
Good afternoon, Chair and Commission. I want to take this opportunity to thank you for having myself, Sharon Oxendine. I'm the Women's Business Center Director for the Support Center, and our CEO, Lynwood Long, from Raleigh today to support us. The Support Center is a statewide nonprofit and community development financial institution that provides small businesses and financial training to startups and existing businesses, as well as lending services to community-based organizations. Our mission is to foster economic development in underserved communities by providing capital, business services, and policy research to support small businesses. Our vision is to create economic opportunity for all. Last year, April 2014, the Women's Business Center was started here in Asheville. It was the vision of Lynwood Long to bring this to Asheville, and we are located in Eagle Market Streets Development Corporation. We offer training, we offer networking, and we offer access to capital. We're a one-stop shop there. We have numerous collaborators here in Asheville, and because of my background of 13 years in economic development and microenterprise work, we're able to make these collaborations work. The Support Center and the Women's Business Center last year made small business loans to 19 companies in western North Carolina and Buncombe County totaling almost $1 million. 61% of that was invested in Buncombe County. In Buncombe County, we created six jobs last year, four of which were woman-owned, four of which were low-income, and six minority-owned, and also three veteran-owned. We have identified those target markets and want to partner with you to work with veterans, with artists, with minorities, and low-income clients here in this area. We also, this past winter, had two Main Street restaurants come to us in trouble, needing access to capital. They employed over 52 employees that are being paid a living wage. Both those restaurants were funded by the Support Center this past year.
We are just delighted to be here in Asheville and in Buncombe County, and to serve western North Carolina. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Sharon or Lynwood? Thank you. Next, we're going to hear from the YWCA, who have five minutes, because they have three applications. Then we'll hear Mountain Housing Opportunities and Riverfront Development.
Hi, I'm Beth Masca. I'm the CEO of the YWCA of Asheville, and I'm pleased to be here, and personally, thank you for your past support of our programs. On behalf of our board and our families that we serve, it means so much to have your support. With that, I want to turn over the presentation to Corinne Harris, our Grants Partnership Specialist, and I'll be available to answer any questions you might have at the end.
Thank you. I'm proud to be here to represent the YWCA of Asheville, an organization that's dedicated to eliminating racism, empowering women, and promoting peace, justice, freedom, and dignity for all. I'm here to talk about the Mother Love Program for Pregnant and Parenting Teens, Drop-In Childcare that supports families in crisis who are seeking services, jobs, or pursuing education, and the Community Service Navigator Program that helps families navigate the net of, the safety net of community services that all of us here today represent. All three of these programs have bilingual staff to meet the needs of our non-English speakers in the community. Pregnancy is the number-one reason that teen girls drop out of high school. In fact, only 36% of teen moms graduate. The goals of the Mother Love Program are to support pregnant and parenting teens so that they stay in school, access higher education, and develop the skills and knowledge they need to have healthy births, become strong parents, and prevent another teen pregnancy. We do this through comprehensive case management services available to 30 of the approximately 100 high school students who are parenting in Buncombe County. We also provide community education and resources to an additional 70 teen parents through monthly lunch bunch. We have these at each of the county's high schools. Last year, because of the support, advocacy, resources, and mentoring of Mother Love, 30 teens stayed at school, 13 high school seniors graduated, and 12 went on to higher education. One was even the valedictorian of her class. One of these seniors, who's now a freshman at AB Tech, spoke at one of our fundraising luncheons recently. Her words were powerful and empowered. She said, "Without Mother Love, I wouldn't have finished high school. I wouldn't have had the resources I needed. I wouldn't have known where to begin to look. I wouldn't have been as competent or confident in being a parent. I learned how to take care of a baby and myself. My dreams for my son are endless. I dream of his success through school. I fantasize about his enthusiasm for sports. I dream we'll be as thick as thieves as he gets older. I dream of him maturing into a confident young man who acknowledges and is proud of my strengths as his mother. I dream that one day, I will instill a work-hard attitude in him, and he'll know he can achieve anything." A mother's education level is the best predictor of her child's future academic success. Because this mother stayed in school and had supports, we're confident that her and her son will have the opportunity to realize their dreams. As a trusted resource in this community for over 108 years, we were excited to join the county's team of Community Service Navigators last July. At the YW, our navigators work to assist people to identify goals, needs, and services to meet those goals and needs. In the first two quarters of this year, our bilingual navigators linked 95 community members to 144 community services. These navigators work primarily in two programs, Diabetes Wellness and Prevention, and Drop-In Childcare. Drop-In provides high-quality childcare to children while their parents seek services, jobs, or pursue education. While not required, the center offers the same high-quality standards of care as our licensed five-star center. This means our kids get exposed to high-quality curriculum and healthy rainbow-in-my-tummy meals, and that the staff has the training and certifications they need to eventually transition into full-time employment with us or another high-quality center. Last year, Drop-In served 140 families with almost 10,000 hours of free childcare. 26 of those families secured full-time jobs, 30 secured part-time jobs, 18 persons with disability secured benefits, seven enrolled in four-year college, and 77 enrolled in community college or vocational training. Many of these participants achieved multiple goals, like getting a part-time job and enrolling in AB Tech. One of our recent participants wrote us a letter to express her gratitude to the Drop-In Program. She writes, "My family and I moved to Asheville three years ago. I spent months looking for a job with no luck. Some of the barriers I faced during my job search were related to the fact that I was a woman and part of a minority group and looking for a job in a recession. I wasn't able to get job interviews since I didn't have a place to take my kids, and paying for childcare without an income was out of the question. We were having difficulty paying rent, buying food, and covering basic expenses. Now, I'm currently employed at a nonprofit organization as a bilingual court advocate where I help victims of domestic violence. I realize that all this is possible because of the support I received from the YW during my job search. Now, I have a job that gives me the opportunity to help people change their lives the way the YW changed mine. Thank you for your support and your time."
Thank you. Any questions for Beth or Corinne? Thank you. Next, Mr. Dedman with Mountain Housing Opportunities. Then we'll hear Riverfront Homeward Bound, Piscile Legal Services.
Thank you. I'm Scott Dedman, Executive Director of Mountain Housing Opportunities. Thank you for your support, both past and current, for this opportunity today, and for your service to this community. I am very gratified that there is a growing awareness in the media and local government and employers for the need for housing supply. We in Buncombe County need thousands, not dozens, of safe, attractive, affordable homes in good neighborhoods. There's a growing awareness that we can't counsel, or refer, or advocate our way out of the shortage of affordable housing. We must build new, affordable, and workforce homes, and preserve homes as well, and this is what we are about at Mountain Housing Opportunities. We serve over 700 households each year, over 1,400 people. We build 60 to 80 new homes each year. Our strategic plan calls for that to increase over the next five years to 200 homes per year. For example, we're now in construction of 55 apartments for the elderly in Lester. We have property for 60 apartments, a proposal that you have supported on Highway 70 in Swananoa called East Haven. We're building 14 single-family homes. Actually, our homeowners are building the homes in Swananoa, and we've built recently, our homeowners have built recently in Weaverville, and also in Black Mountain. We serve 100 households, over 100 households each year, in the Emergency Home Repair Program, saving homes and saving lives all over Asheville and Buncombe County. I hope that you will review the sheet that you have in your materials, including the back of the sheet that shows examples of the homeowners that are now waiting for assistance through our Emergency Home Repair Program. Please look at both sides of that and review the information. I've not repeated that today. And as always, we say that if you work in Asheville or Buncombe County, you should be able to live in this community in a safe, attractive, affordable home in a good neighborhood. And when you retire, or if you become disabled, this should still be true. Mountain Housing has helped over 5,000 Buncombe County households to achieve that goal. Thank you for your support.
Thanks, Scott. Any questions for Mr. Dedman? All righty. Next up, we'll hear Riverfront Development, Homeward Bound, Piscile Legal, and Pack Square Cultural Partnership.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Catherine Mitchell, and I'm the Executive Director of Riverfront Development Group. And no, we are not located on the river. However, we did inspire development on the river, because in 1996, we proposed a riverboat on the river, which, while it got federal support, did not get local support. So we decided to expand our services, but to keep the name. We are involved in business services, skills development, and affordable housing. Today, our application to the Board concerns the 522 workforce recipients, the 20,000 households receiving food and nutrition services, the 1,775 emergency assistance families served in Buncombe County, and the 10,202 children receiving support by social services. Our proposal is about jobs. We provide supportive services for job development, and in our business services, we provide support, incubation, as well as incorporation development for young people who have and are aging out of foster care. Unfortunately, the numbers that I recited comprise the bulk of the people that we have served in our business services function, because those young people desire to provide for themselves. They were having difficulty finding jobs, but they had skills. In that development, we have mentored 45 clients. We've incorporated 12 businesses, five of which were nonprofits, and we have taken four nonprofits through the 501(c)(3) process. The most noted of our clients regarding those services are My Father Taught Me That, Joe Green Presents Funny or Us, as well as Hood Talk. We also have mentored and are promoting Zelda Divine, as well as Millennium New Services that are intervention services. Oh, my. Our proposal is consistent with the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, which will be in effect on July 15th of this year.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. Any questions for Ms. Mitchell about this proposal? Thank you.
Okay.
Next, we'll hear Brian, Homeward Bound, Piscile Legal Services, Pack Square Cultural, and then our last will be Asheville, Scott and Asheville-Buncombe Community Christian Ministry.
Good afternoon. My name is Brian Alexander. I'm the Executive Director of Homeward Bound of Western North Carolina. And we exist to end homelessness in our community, and we do that through helping individuals and families experiencing homelessness find affordable, permanent housing, and giving them the services that they need to maintain that. So I'm here today to talk about a couple of different programs. The first is the beginning of that process, which is at our A-Hope Day Center, and we're talking about coordinated assessment. Coordinated assessment is a best practice that we are going to begin full implementation of, beginning in the fiscal year, July 1st. Just to give you a sense of what coordinated assessment is, I was telling some folks in a group on Friday about the emergency room. The emergency room is something that we all understand. When we go to the emergency room, if we have something that is a minor illness, a cold, if we have an infected hangnail, I think is what I used on Friday, we're not expecting that we're going to be the first one into the emergency room. We're not going to be seeing those services immediately. The folks that have the crisis, the heart attack, somebody who is on the verge of dying is going to be the person that they take in for services first. And coordinated assessment works in very much the same way. We will be assessing over 2,500, literally homeless individuals in our community to determine what their level of vulnerability is, because what we want to do is we want to match the level of services and the financial assistance with the level of need for those. And the reason why we do that is because we want to make sure that no one dies on the street. At that same time, I was telling a story about one of our most vulnerable members of our community, who had been homeless for many, many years. And he had severe and persistent mental illness. He was somebody who was in and out of the jail system, who was costing our community an enormous amount of money. But because of the way that the system works, it was not, we were not able to help him immediately. He was next on the waiting list for permanent housing. We were ready and had an apartment ready for him, and he died on the street last year. We don't want that to happen again. It is imperative that, and it's imperative for us, and we need to make sure that we, as a community, come together to make sure that that does not happen. The A-Hope Center and this coordinated assessment system is going to be feeding into the other project that Buncombe County has been funding, called Project the other project that Buncombe County has been funding called Project Rebound. Project Rebound is another best-practice model based on Housing First. It says that we should take people as quickly as possible and put them into permanent housing and give them those supports that are necessary to help them maintain that. This is the highest level of supportive housing intervention in our community. We have clinical substance abuse and mental health workers who are working to find appropriate housing for folks and give them those clinical services while they're in housing. Homeward Bound has had an enormous amount of success over the last, I guess, nine years since we started doing this work via Housing First. We've moved over a thousand people into permanent housing with an eighty-nine percent housing retention rate. This highest level of intervention, working with the hardest and most vulnerable people in our community called Project Rebound, is the most successful of those. We've kept ninety-four percent of those folks in permanent housing, which means that these are folks that would normally be going through all of our emergency services. They'd be using the ambulance services in and out of jail, in and out of detox and substance abuse treatment centers. Of the almost two hundred and fifty people that we have moved into Project Rebound, our community, based on data that we put together back when the ten-year plan was initially put together, we know that it costs about twenty-three thousand dollars per person, per year, for somebody to be homeless on the streets. Based on that number, we know that we've saved, for those almost two hundred and fifty people, over three million dollars just through Project Rebound alone. We hope that you will continue your support of Project Rebound and make sure that, because our point-in-time count numbers, if you've noticed in the paper recently, for the first time in seven years, our chronic homeless number has gone up, and that is a direct result of what Scott and Laura were talking about earlier, which is our lack of affordable housing. We know people are going to be on the streets longer, and so A-Hope becomes even more important, is to make people safe in that interim time until we can get folks into permanent housing. We hope that you will support us as we go forward in this, as you have the ten-year plan.
Any questions for Mr. Alexander? Thank you, Brian. Piscile Legal, Pack Square Cultural, and ABCCM.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and staff. I'm Robin Merrill. I'm Managing Attorney at Piscile Legal Services, and I want to begin by saying thank you for the support that you have provided us over the last several years. I want you to know that in two thousand and fourteen, we were able to serve seven thousand five hundred and fifty-one residents of Buncombe County, and also help those folks with access to eleven million dollars of quantifiable benefits that was returned to them because of our work. We are asking today for funding for our Child and Family Protection and Self-Sufficiency Project, and we estimate that with that money that we can improve the lives of at least six thousand Buncombe County residents. We propose to work on three major areas, the first one being safety from abuse. The project will help victims of domestic violence and child abuse escape abuse and rebuild their lives. Our attorneys help victims secure court protection orders, child custody, child support, divorce, and rights to essential marital property such as a house or a car. We are very excited to be partners with you and several others on the Family Justice Center. We can't wait to get in there, and we're excited about that opportunity for improved coordination of services, which we know will happen just by folks being under the same roof together. Secondly, we will work on safe, stable, and affordable housing. Our project will help low-income families stabilize their housing and avoid homelessness. Our attorneys stop illegal and unnecessary evictions, stop foreclosure, improve substandard housing conditions, maintain utility services, and secure public and subsidized housing benefits for very low-income families. You've probably heard a dozen times today that affordable housing is at a crisis point in our community, and that makes it even more crucial that our low-income families not be evicted and not be foreclosed. We know already, without an affordable housing crunch, that every time a family has to move, a child loses four months of school. So it's just crucial that people stay in their homes, and attorneys can do that in a way that no one else can. Finally, we'll work on the area of income and healthcare, helping low-income families secure public benefits and other resources for which they're eligible, including subsistence income, healthcare, and food assistance. An investment in Piscile Legal Services is an investment in the community. We know that when we stop domestic violence, prevent homelessness, and secure essentials like income and healthcare, we prevent the cost for needly, for, I'm sorry, we prevent the need for costly public and community services, including law enforcement and corrections, healthcare, emergency shelter, and child protective services. So we look forward to partnering with you again over the next year.
Any questions for Ms. Merrill? Thanks, Robin. Pack Square Cultural Partnership and ABCCM.
Well, good afternoon. I'm John Ellis, Managing Director of the Diana Worthen Theater, and I'm here with Pam Myers, Executive Director of the Asheville Art Museum. Since coming before you a year ago, we've gone through a few changes, but despite all the changes that we've gone through, I'm proud to say a lot has not only remained the same, but it has improved. We've gone through a successfully navigated, a restructuring of the governance in the building in which we were housed, and we've come out the other side. We formed a tenant association, the Pack Square Cultural Partnership. We've engaged the services of a professional property management firm, and after a very careful search, the Alliance Commercial Property Management. We're working with them on systems, procedures, and relying on their expertise. But most importantly, despite all these changes, we've maintained our focus and our missions and our services to the community. We've maintained and expanded our services to education here in the county and beyond throughout Western North Carolina. We've maintained and expanded our programs to the community, and participation is increasing. And while there are just the two of us here today, we have also expanded and continue our services to the various arts groups who use the facility. For example, the Asheville Lyric Opera with their production of West Side Story this week. Three performances, almost at capacity, but a few tickets remain. All of this activity needs a home, a space, a building, and that is where we need your support. Thank you, and now Pam.
Thank you, Commissioners and Dr. Green. We appreciate you having us here. I'm Pamela Myers. I've been Executive Director of the Asheville Art Museum, which was founded in nineteen forty-eight, but I've only been there since nineteen ninety-six, but it seems a long time now. During that time, I've seen much change and growth, both within the Asheville Art Museum and in the communities that we serve. The new Pack Square Cultural Partnership between the museum and the theater is a strong and healthy one. Our boards and our many, many supporters, thank you for twenty-three years of partnership with our organizations in our current facilities and previous to that in the Civic Center. Your support has been, is and has been essential to bringing inspiring visual and performing art, regional history, music, and culture, vital and otherwise unavailable education programs for teachers, youth, and seniors, and economic prosperity to Buncombe County. With your support of basic operations, the museum and the theater have been recognized for excellence in all areas of their operations, and have engaged over two hundred thousand participants in programs over the last past year alone. The museum and the theater continue to expand to meet growing demands from Buncombe County residents, educators, and visitors. We are a unique community resource and asset, and we thank you for your commitment to enriching art, culture, education, and the quality of life for all of us.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for John or Pam?
Great. You see how fast a year goes by.
That it does.
All right. Well, our final presentation of the day will be Asheville-Buncombe Community Christian Ministry. See, Dr. Rogers here, and look forward to hearing. You have five minutes. You have three applications.
All right. Thank you all very much for what you do for our community. We've been partners a long time. I really appreciate how the staff leadership from Dr. Green, and Mandy, and John, and all of their teams work to not only fund us, but also fund so many of our wonderful partners in the community. I have Mary Scudlow with me, who's the Director of our Veterans Restoration Quarters, as well as Steadfast House today. I want to say how much we appreciate the support of community navigators. These community navigators at our Harmony Valley side and our south side are also not only serving about twice as many customers as we expanded down there, but we're also hoping you might add that to our ABCCM north side. But thank you for the opportunity to bring more resources to them. Second, I want to talk about Transformation Village. As Robin mentioned a little while ago, you've already heard about the number-one priority around affordable housing and also serving our homeless. Most of you know that the Veterans Restoration Quarters put forth a bold vision in two thousand and seven to take all of our veterans off the street all at once. Since that time, we've had less than ten unsheltered veterans in the point-in-time counts, and we are essentially at functionally zero for those who are literally homeless. We're proposing to you to do that again with Transformation Village for our homeless women, our moms with children, but also intact families. We're asking for your support on two levels with this project. First, we've raised two and a half million towards a five-million-dollar pledge goal. Second, we're asking you for, well, first, we're asking you for a capital gift of five hundred thousand, about ten percent, just as you supported ABCCM Harmony Valley in completing that one-point-four-million-dollar campaign with a hundred and forty-thousand-dollar gift. I've given you a packet with information that shows you the new location that we're working on. If you'll turn past my cover-page memo, it'll tell you that we've identified twenty-four acres behind Ruggen Home across from Jim Barclay on I-26 and behind Ruggen Home across from the Biltmore Square Mall. If you turn the page on that, you'll see that we have already identified plans for a village that will actually have five different neighborhoods. It'll have an area specifically for intact families, a neighborhood for veteran women, for women dealing with substance abuse, for moms with children, and a large area for those who are survivors of domestic violence, behind a double level of security to meet state and federal guidelines. It'll have a state-of-the-art community training center, similar to building on the concept at the Veterans Quarters that in the last eight years has helped over three thousand homeless veterans leave the streets and never come back. The training center will include a culinary training center, a medical clinic, as well as multiple training centers to continue our good work in that arena. In January, we submitted two hundred and seventy-four names to the Department of Labor to find out how they were doing eighteen months later. The report came back from them that ninety-one percent were still on the job after eighteen months, making fifteen dollars and eighty-one cents an hour on the average. We believe that we can meet these needs through one-bedroom efficiency apartments, a two-bedroom unit model that is based on some of the best architect practices that came out of Cretina. Our last proposal is a Circles request that builds on a new, two new grant opportunities with the Federal Department of Health and Human Services, and you can see that we can take a small investment of fifty thousand dollars for each of these, match it with fifty thousand from ABCCM, and then multiply it tenfold with two grants up to five hundred and fifty thousand to provide both stability, training, job training, and job placement for our low-income families. Thanks again for this opportunity to work and to partner with you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Is the multipliers that you were talking about on the grants, do we have that information in here or not?
Yes, it's in the last paragraph.
Okay.
It is.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, Scott.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Morris. All right. Did I miss anybody? We will not be taking a vote today. The procedure will be that we'll be giving input to the county manager, and she will be giving a budget presentation May nineteenth, is that right? And in between that time and when we adopt the final budget, there will be discussions. There may be some changes, but the final budget vote will probably be in June, thirteenth of June.
Third Tuesday.
Okay, third Tuesday. So thank you so much for coming. Wonderful presentations. We're so proud of our nonprofits and all the groups, what you do for our community, and thank you. It's just tough, tough decisions, but that's why we're up here. And thank you again for being here today.